Good evening. This is the Greenfield Public Schools regularly scheduled school committee meeting for the month of September, rescheduled from September 9 to tonight. It is September 14, 2020, and this meeting is being recorded by GCTV. We are also meeting under the revised open meeting laws, fully remotely, in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A, Section 20. And at this point, I would like to have a roll call. Member Johnson Musad, would you do a roll call of the members, please?
Chair Poiety, do you want to inquire whether anyone else is recording tonight?
Thank you. We'll take a minute to ask whether or not there are anyone, anyone else recording the meeting that's in attendance. Okay, hearing none. We'll move forward with the roll call, please.
Member Karen? I think I already say yes. Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, I am here. Chair Poiety?
Here.
Member Wall?
Here.
Mayor Weider Gardner?
I'm here.
We are all present. We have a quorum.
Wonderful. So we'll call the meeting to order at 6:01 PM. We do have six past minutes of school committee meetings, both regular and special school committee meetings, that we do need to approve this evening. I would actually, in the interest of time, like to ask for a motion to approve all six of those unless anyone says we should do them separately. Any of the school committee members prefer to do them separately, speak now, or we'll do them all together.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on any of the minutes? If so, just indicate the date. The dates are June 10, July 13, July 30, August 4, August 12, and August 31. Any changes or comments about the minutes? Okay, so let's move to a vote to approve.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Abstain. I haven't read them all.
Secretary Johnson, I mean, yes. Chair Poiety?
Yes.
Member Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Weider Gardner?
Yes.
Well, we had, what, six yeses and one abstain.
Okay, so the motion passes to approve all of the minutes. Thank you. And we'll move now into public comment. What we've done for the past few meetings has worked relatively well in that we first asked that if there are folks who are able to be logged in to the remote meeting through WebEx, through the link, the online link, you can indicate in the chat function that you would like to make a public comment. And then after we've gone through all of those, we'll ask folks who are on the line, on the phone, to speak and indicate their wish to comment. Anyone who does comment will have three minutes. Do we have anyone in the chat?
Catherine Golub?
Catherine Golub, sure. The chair recognized you for three minutes. Just state your name and the town you live in, and then you have three minutes to speak. Go ahead.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Yeah. Okay, great. Catherine Golub, I live at 34 Glenbrook Drive in Greenfield, and I know that there's a couple of other people who are trying to get onto WebEx. I'm not sure if they'll be able to, but, so I'm one of several people who wanted to speak on this issue. So first of all, I just want to start by thanking all of you for the time and energy that I know you've been putting into getting this school year off to a good start for our kids. So thank you for that. Earlier this summer, I was thrilled to hear that the school resource officer position would not be part of this school year. And then I was incredibly hurt when Superintendent Harper let me know that the funds that had been allocated to the SRO had not yet, were still available and might be able to be allocated to racial justice funding for the schools. As a member of Greenfield Racial Justice and as the mom of a 12-year-old kiddo of color, I am here to ask that you vote to reallocate the funds that had been previously designated to the school resource officer to programs promoting racial justice in our schools. As a taxpayer, I believe that the Greenfield Public Schools should use our city's financial resources to create a just and inclusive environment for all students, especially students of color. I am painfully aware of the district's budget shortfalls and the financial challenges due to the pandemic, and I'm also equally aware of the pandemic of racism that has been raging in our country for the past 400 years. Racism is typically the issue that is put on the back burner, and it is time that the Greenfield Public Schools put our money where our mouths are. I am aware that the district does not have the same amount to fund this dedicate, to dedicate to this issue as it may have before the pandemic, but where there is a will, there is a way, and each small step matters. So that is why I urge you to vote to allocate at least part of the money that would have gone to the SRO to programs that are designed to meet the needs of students of color and create an atmosphere of equity and justice within our schools. One such program is Community Action Stand Up, the Standing Together Against Racism STAR program, will support students and teachers at Greenfield High School this school year to deal forthrightly with issues of racial equity and to give us closer to the kind of school committee community that our students need. Thank you again for your time and energy over these last several months, and I look forward to hearing your response on this important issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Member Johnson Musad, do we have anyone else indicating and a request to public comment?
We do not, but we do have several people who've logged on in the last few minutes and may need a repeat of the instructions.
Sure. So we're in the public comment portion of the meeting. For anyone who's joined us and is interested in making a public comment, now's your chance to either indicate that in the chat box or in a minute. Once we've exhausted all those in the chat, we will move to asking people who are on by phone to indicate a request to comment.
I'm not seeing anyone in the chat.
Okay. So anyone, I'm sorry, Mayor, what was that?
I was just going to say, can we make, let's make it clear to those people who have called in that if you wish to speak, put your comments in the chat. However, I think if they're on phone, they may not be able to do.
No, they can't. So we'll ask them now. Yeah. If you are on the phone and you wish to make a public comment, now's your chance to speak up. Let us know. We'll take everyone. Okay. So, hearing none, we will actually move into committee reports and the, let's see, chair's report. Well, this is a big week for us here in Greenfield, the Greenfield Public Schools. We begin welcoming our students back on Thursday of this week to a new, and this word is so overused right now, but unprecedented, start to school year. We've got the fall weather welcoming us back this week, and I know that families and our students are anxious about the uncharted waters of fully remote learning that we're about to wade into. I also know that Superintendent Harper has spent countless hours every week since March working incredibly hard to put together a, what is a logistical nightmare and a very, very confusing set of circumstances to be able to welcome our students back and put a curriculum in place where we can do remote learning. And I want to thank the superintendent for how hard she has worked over the course of this time to bring together everyone in the community that touches the schools, to work hard to have, have a curriculum in place that is the best that we can offer during this time. And, you know, the other piece I want, I want to do is I want to, I want to thank our students and our families for sticking with us and asking the important questions and reaching out when they needed assistance. And, you know, also, number one thing, I think, is also being patient with all of the unknowns, and I'm looking forward to seeing how well we can, how well we can manage this as we move forward. I also want to remind folks that we made a commitment in August as a school committee that we will be meeting approximately every two weeks from this point forward to, to identify what's changed in the landscape of the year. And as, if we are able to, as soon as we are able to, do a safe transition to in-person learning, we will start that process for students based on the guidance from the state on what makes sense to in prioritizing those. And I wish everyone just a really great, positive, and successful start to the year. And that is the chair's report. Let's move into the superintendent's report. Superintendent Harper, do you have a report for us this evening?
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Thank you to the committee. It's nice to see so many people tuned in. I echo the chair's comments in that we are thrilled to be opening the start of the 2020, 2021 school year on Thursday this week. Everything looks so different. As a parent myself, I can say that the beginning of the year is always a interesting, busy, chaotic, and sort of some jitters in the stomach in a regular year, just thinking about your children and their transitions. And this year has that to a new degree. And so I just want to say, really thank the community for their cooperation, support, and understanding, and we are so excited that our students will be back with us, even though it will be remotely. And it was the unanimous vote of this committee to have a remote learning plan in place, and so it has been the administration's job to do that as well as we can, and to think about how to reach all of our students and how to connect with them as best as possible.
I would like to note that earlier this evening, a series of joint agreements between the Greenfield School Committee and the Greenfield Education Association were released to the community, and the most important among these is the school schedules from pre-K through 12 that reflect what we know parents at home and certainly teachers and staff have been eagerly awaiting, which is agreements between the association and the school committee about our school schedules. So this information is certainly essential to starting our year, and we think that these reflect what's good for kids and also how to engage best with them throughout the year. And we're very pleased that this information is released. Obviously, we would all have liked to have seen this information come out sooner, and I can simply say that we have been working diligently through a process that needed to happen to bring these schedules to you. So we're quite glad that they're here and they're ready for you. I also will share, and I sent in an email and a message to the community earlier today that I am so grateful for my time in Greenfield, and this is my seventh year in Greenfield, and I do want to share with the broader community that I will plan to finish out this year working through June of 2021. And I'm so grateful for the opportunities in Greenfield, but I will not be seeking renewal of my contract after my current three-year contract ends at the end of this year. And I remain committed to our students. I just so much love working with the community, the students, the staff, and the families in Greenfield. I appreciate your support of my leadership and mostly of our students, and I am excited to see what this year brings, and I remain committed to helping us through a rather difficult time for our country, our state, and our community, and keeping our students at the forefront of that. So if you need anything, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, and, you know, we will, I think, make the most of an unusual year and keep our students front and center. So thank you to everybody, and it's, it's a bit bittersweet, but I, I look forward to the success of this continued year, and I'm quite hopeful that the early notice to the school committee, which I've provided them, lets them do a thorough and complete search so that there's continuity and that this, you know, 10 months or so of notice means that this is not an abrupt decision for the community and that we can bring stability and consistency for our students, which has been an important role of mine throughout my time in Greenfield. And I want to thank all of you for being so welcoming. Thank you.
Chair Poiety, are you still with us? I think we may have lost her. I did get a message from our recording secretary that she became the host. I saw earlier that Chair Poiety was the host, so I wonder, Vice Chair?
But Chair Poiety has been kicked off.
Okay. I wonder, Vice Chair Ekstrom, if you want to take over chairing duties while we wait or what you recommend?
I am happy to do that. I do want to say one thing, everyone who's called in, if you can mute your phones, because if we, the back, the, your, the background noise gets picked up. And, Amy's calling me right now. Hold on, one moment. Okay, Chair Poiety has indeed been lost from the meeting, as has the mayor, so we're just going to continue on. We still have a quorum, and she is going, they both, I expect, are going to work to get back on to the meeting. So I, we have, I'm going to move on to new business unless there are, actually, there's probably subcommittee information or there are updates from the great team. I'd be, we would love to hear that. I'm sure that everyone in the community would love to hear that, and if not, then there's nothing to share.
I can, I guess, try to speak about the great team. The only updates for them are the same ones that the superintendent just spoke of, that, you know, that kind of was on a pause until we could figure out this part of it, of the schedules and everything. There have been teachers working to have meet and greets, some in person, some virtual, and pickups, supply pickups been having, happening across the district, and really just getting everybody excited and ready to start.
Thank you, Katie. Jordana, I know that you've been part of all that stuff. Is there anything you wanted to add, just having been a member of the group and all that good thing?
Yeah, the, the great team has, as Katie said, been on, on hold a bit while negotiations took the center stage regarding some of these things, but we have been clear that there needs to be frequent, regular monitoring of our reopening plan and the remote learning. So as an example, something that the great committee has been hearing is feedback from the community about having different half-days in the district. So we had, in some of our earlier models, we had half-days at the middle school and elementary on Wednesdays, and early releases at the high school on Friday. And one of the pieces of feedback that came before that group was that parents really wanted to see for consistency that there was one day, that there was an early release, so that if you have children across multiple grade levels, that your older students could even help the younger ones, and that those were not two different days that parents had to take off from work. So that feedback that was received then sort of transferred into negotiations, and as of today, our schedule reflects that aligned consistent early release across the district, where there's only one early release day on Wednesdays, and that that's consistent all the way through. So that's an example of having an additional sort of forum that can hear and respond to the community is going to be so important as we continue to move through, because we are doing things differently, and we need to hear from the community so that we can act upon it in a timely way. So the great committee will continue to meet and hear feedback. The email address will stay open. It's great@gpsk12.org. You can send comments at any time. If something is not working, it is working, you can provide your feedback, and that group will be advisory to the school committee. They're not the decision-making body, but they will continue to hear feedback and bring it forward in a formal way. And this is more organized and allows continuous input so that we can be flexible, because the situations are changing frequently, and we want to respond to the needs of the community and mostly our students, as well as our staff.
And just in support of that, I know that the school committee is also interested or is supportive of the great committee continuing their good deeds. Unless there's anything else, I'll move into the first topic on our agenda this evening, which is budget subcommittee recommendations, and I'm kind of segueing into that because there has, there was a budget subcommittee meeting, but we're going to be talking about how, what we did in that meeting and this topic, so I'll just sort of get into that, unless there are any objections. Okay, great. Thank you. So to provide everyone with a little bit of background, we, the budget committee has, takes a look at a number of things on various reports. The full school committee also sees all of those reports, and oftentimes, they're, they don't match necessarily by virtue of being two different reports, and has this one been updated or that one been updated, or what does this mean in this one, or what does it mean in that one? And the district is, is lucky enough to have a program called Munis that holds all of that information. So what we are recommending to the school committee, and we do need to vote on, is that we move directly to using only Munis to provide our reports for financial review. That means that we would be looking at the budget in, in those reports, and we are able to sort of get those reports into the format that we are used to, meaning with, with little work, it would be, we would see sort of year-to-date for the previous year, what we, what we've spent, what was budgeted, what's left, things like that. And this is in an effort to, basically less paperwork, but ensure that the, there's no risk in things being lost somewhere in the middle.
You open to a motion?
Sure. Go ahead. Yes. One of the things that we talked about regarding this was that I would be doing training for the committee on reading Munis reports and the chart of accounts and the, the structure of, of the account code so that we could have a, a better appreciation for what it is that you'd be looking at, and then looking to, you know, get consensus on what Susan's talking about regarding the reports to use, so that we're all comfortable looking and being able to have a fuller and more appreciative understanding of the financial condition of where the district is at any time that I do a report. So we'll be scheduling that at some time in the near future. We either end of this month, beginning of next month, to do that. Thanks.
Vice Chair Ekstrom, before we take motions, being encouraged by Chair Poiety by text to make sure we still have a quorum, apparently there's a G-SAT issue.
I was just going to say, is there still a quorum? If there's only the two of you, we do not have a quorum right now.
We have three at least, but let's, let me just do another roll call. Member Karen?
Here.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Present.
Member Hollins? Last, Member Hollins. Secretary Johnson, I'm here. We know Chair Poiety is not here. Member Wall, are you here? We do not have Member Wall, and Mayor Weider Gardner is not here. So it's like we have a quorum of four.
Okay. So I guess this, for now, is information sharing?
No, we do have a, we have four of seven. That's a quorum, right?
Who's the fourth member, Johnson?
Oh, I'm sorry, we don't, I, I checked a box. I shouldn't have checked. Nope, we do not, no longer have a quorum.
Right. Is there a length of time that we can wait for them to try to get back on, or is it just, we have?
I absolutely think we could recess.
We can take a 15-minute break.
We're, we're essentially meeting at, at the moment without a quorum.
Right.
It's like everyone just got up and left the meeting. What would you do, you would like?
We can still hold the meeting, but you don't have a quorum, which means we'd have to revisit it. Oh, here's Member Hollins. I'm just going to put you guys on mute so you don't have to listen.
This is a G-SAT problem, guys. I think everybody who's off, I know for sure, doesn't have, has G-SAT.
It also calls into question the open nature of it, if a significant number of Greenfield residents are on G-SAT and they can't access the meeting because...
That's right.
Right.
Remember Johnson Musad, I thought the idea of a 15-minute recess is, certainly seems appropriate, folks that are listening at home could at least know that we will try again to see if we have a quorum, and then there's no deliberation in the meantime. You don't even have, you don't even have a quorum to end the meeting.
No, we don't have a meeting, a quorum to end the meeting either.
Nope.
All right. Why don't we wait 15 minutes? I'm going to try to figure out some way to put a note up on my screen in case people join us and wonder what's going on.
Let me ask this. Are there people who are not going to be speaking this evening who could log off? Perhaps we have too many users, for whatever reason, and they could watch the, watch it on GCTV or wherever else it's being broadcast?
I'm getting the impression that it's the G-SAT internet provider that is the issue. It's not the Cisco WebEx meeting platform that's the issue.
Oh, boy.
Amy has called back in again right now.
She's calling in?
She's trying.
Okay.
Sorry. I was going to go ahead and mute myself now.
Then you concur.
Hi, this is Amy. I'm back on by phone, I think. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
We have a recommendation to direct all missing members to call in.
Yep.
I think the only issue is that the public may not receive that notification.
Do you have a quorum right now?
We do now that you rejoined. Yeah, you're our quorum.
Yeah, there, there is a G-SAT issue is the problem.
Right.
So anyone who's trying to use G-SAT is going to be unsuccessful. If someone, if someone would be so kind as to text the mayor...
I'm back.
She just joined. She made it back.
Okay. Who are, who are we missing, and then we'll just try to move forward.
Susan and Jean.
I got, I got on through the extension, the G-SAT extension.
Okay.
Remains, how public is this if we know that people can't get in? I don't know. I don't know, but...
I know, I did, I did actually get a message from a couple of folks that were having trouble with connecting before we even started.
Doing the best we can.
Yeah. I, I can't see anything with this, because I can't access it.
Or maybe that's, I'm not sure, but everyone who doesn't need to be speaking, please mute. Thank you.
Just received a message from someone who is using G-SAT, and they are able to get back in, so maybe that situation has resolved itself.
Okay. Should, maybe just one text message to Member Hollins to let her know to try again? Let me do that. I don't know, she's a text person.
I just texted her. She's going to try.
Okay, great.
I said we got that, we got that kink all worked out, so that won't happen to our students on the first day of school. It happened to us.
Yeah, we're just stress testing the system. GCTV is still here.
Yep.
Are you all still recording?
I believe he is.
So it might be worth just...
Yep.
Excellent. I'm going to just repeat the dial-in information in case people are watching and want to dial in. The phone number is 408-418-9388. And...
Member Hollins just got back in, she's going to sign in again.
Once you dial that number, the PIN to enter the meeting is 132-112-8022, pound sign, and then you'll hit the pound sign again when it asks for your invite ID or whatever it is. You don't need one of those, just hit the pound sign a second time and you can connect to the meeting. Okay.
Can I make a suggestion, please?
Please, Member Hollins, go ahead.
I've been talking to Jean well because we are both off completely, but if you're off completely, you can't hear the phone number. If there's a school committee member that's off, could I ask you send them the phone number on a text message so they can call in?
I think we're all connected now. I also was disconnected.
Ah, okay.
It's a G-Set issue.
I figured. Thank you.
Is Member Wall back with us?
No, not yet.
Okay.
So maybe send her the phone number because I don't think she...
Can someone send?
She's sending me a message that she still can't connect, so...
If someone else could send her the information about the phone number and the PIN number to get in?
I don't know.
Did, did you got, what business was happening while we were on hiatus there? Did you move past?
We were discussing Munis and preparing to make a motion to have more discussion, I suspect, and realized that it didn't matter because we didn't have enough bodies.
Fair enough. Could I make a note here? Please, go ahead. If folks are having trouble with the internet and want to call in, of course, it's hard because you have to get to the internet to access the agenda, but we do post both. So if anybody is ever looking for the call-in number over the WebEx conference access number, that is also on our website, even if you can get to it from your cell phone, if you go to GPSK12.org. We post both the agenda call-in and the live conference line, which is 1408-418-9388, and the PIN is 132-112-8022. Thank you, Superintendent Harper. Yep. Okay, so we were at the Munis discussion under new business, so Item A under new business from the budget subcommittee recommendations. And were you giving, Member Ekstrom, were you giving an overview of the Munis and looking for a motion? Is that right?
Andy and I both have done that. Andy, I don't know when we lost everyone, so maybe if you want to repeat what you said about trainings, et cetera?
Sure. Thank you. So it was discussed and agreed to at the subcommittee meeting that in this effort to be more efficient, that we would conduct, I would conduct for the committee, a Munis workshop, if you will, on reading the Munis reports, discussion about the segments of the chart of accounts, the account structure that you see in Munis reports, and then we could get some consensus as to the type of reports that the committee, or report, I should say, that the committee would want so that you've got a more, I'll say, robust and solid understanding of the financial condition of the district. It doesn't mean that you can't ask for, we'll say, different reports, but if you, right now, if you look, you know, the business office is generating three different reports for Munis purposes for presentation of the committee and that if used to its fullest capacity regarding the report sections of it, you'd be able to get that information with some, say, school committee professional development on reading the Munis reports and how it would be going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. So do we have, we don't have a motion yet, though. Before comment, Member Hollins, let's figure out what our motion would be. I am thinking, Member Ekstrom, help me out, that maybe this is two motions because the training and then also the shift to Munis reports.
I don't know that we need to have a motion for a training.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would like to start with a motion regarding the shift to Munis. Anyone have something as simple as a motion to do all financial reporting for the school committee using Munis? Was that Member Wall?
Weida Gardner.
Sorry. It's the southern thing. Mayor Weida Gardner with the motion, and then is there a second?
Second.
From Member Johnson Musad. And let's have discussion. Member Hollins, I heard you first. Go ahead.
Yes. The Munis system was brought in, I think, four years ago. I don't know the exact date, I think it was October. Because until that time, the school committee reports was in cost centers or expense centers, so we knew how much we were spending on transportation, how much on high school electives, how much on everything. We had about 22 expense centers. And because Munis was not set up that way for the school committee, the business managers since then have run a report with the expense centers from the old system, but at least the school committee was advised how the money was being spent that's in our budget, which is our responsibility to know and that's how we develop our budget. If you get rid of those reports before Munis is set up, I personally don't need in-service on how to read the Munis report. I need the Munis report to show how our money's being spent so I'm informed and so that we are able to make transfers if they're needed from one place to another. So I think that's the priority, is not to have everything in Munis, but to continue until the Munis system is set up, the report we've had for four years that advises us how our money's being spent. Otherwise, there's no way to know currently. So I don't support this motion because our Munis isn't set up so we can understand how money was being spent, even if we understand how to read the line items. Thank you.
Well, Member Ekstrom or Andy, would either of you like to comment on that?
I guess, first of all, I saw Mayor Weeden Garden's hand.
You go ahead, you go ahead, Andy.
I guess, I mean, I understand a member Hollins' view, but I just don't, I don't know if, quite honestly, the right reports had been shared because we have to report specific information by specific categories to the Department of Ed on the annual end-of-year people financial report. So there are reports and there are ways that you can sort it by cost center, by function code, et cetera, that I believe would go towards meeting exactly what it is that is required as far as getting an understanding of the system, because it is required by the Department of Ed and the compliance reviews that we go through regarding the end-of-year financial report, that the account structure used by all schools, town, city, town, school districts, regional school districts are in line with the DESI chart of accounts reporting requirements. Hence, we thought on doing some training to show, you know, and explore the reports that are there that, quite honestly, might not have necessarily been shared with the committee in the past. Thank you.
Wait, can I just add, Susan, real quick, sorry? I want to add that we have given the business manager, Andy, the directive of get Munis into the place it needs to be and organize and properly coded so that we can do this. And he assured me that, yes, there were issues and yes, if that was the intention.
May I respond to his comment to my response, please?
Sure.
It's true that the state has a way that all accounts from all school districts are synthesized into, I don't know, it's like 13 expense centers broadly, but that's not the way we develop our budget. And the law for school committees developing budgets is to say how you want your budget divided so that you can monitor it in your district. So we actually, in the last budget committee, proposed a policy that identified the expense centers. I think we had 22. That's the way our budgets have always been passed by this committee. At the end of the year, those cost centers are all compressed into the state system of maybe 19 broad categories, but that isn't the way our budgets develop and that's not the way, we should be reviewing our budget the way we develop it. And this report has been done for four years. I don't see the reason to get rid of it until we can see our expenses in the way we develop our budget to monitor the exchanges from one to another when it's needed, so I don't see why we're getting rid of the information we have that's essential to us. And plus, there's a policy that didn't come back for second reading, but somewhere in space for this committee on that issue.
I don't think that we're getting rid of seeing those things. It's just that that information, I'm sorry, Rexanne, that it's just that that information is now going to be in Munis and we'll just see it as a report from Munis, not that those smaller line items or cost centers, I believe is what you keep saying, Susan.
Expense centers, whatever. But until we, until we have that, we have no information on how the money's...
And that's what we...
According to our...
Chair Prorietti, this conversation is kind of outside of our normal order. Normally, people are recognized, they speak, and then it switches, so I don't know if you might want to...
And actually, the mayor's had her hand up.
I was just going to say that I understand where Member Hollins is coming from. You know, if you're used to seeing a report one way, it's difficult to look at it another way. However, that is the purpose of training. Andy is exactly right. And so at some point, we'll all be able to get on board with how we're going to be able to use Munis. Munis is what we have. The sooner we get used to it and used to reading those reports, the better off I think we'll be. I don't, myself, have a problem with seeing it in both ways, the way Member Hollins is describing it, as well as now here's how it's going to look in Munis and here's how you find it. So I don't know that there's any need for an argument here. The motion was to accept Munis as our accounting system going forward, I guess, something similar to that. And hopefully, that will include most significant training by Andy because my experience with Munis is it is a little difficult and it is very different, but nevertheless, it is what we have. So I support this motion for that reason.
And if I may, Chair...
Thank you. And Andy, I'll recognize you next. I do want to remind the school committee members, we cannot all see you when you raise your hand to ask to be recognized. I have three screens full of people in the WebEx. So if you're raising your hand to be recognized, I probably won't see you. Just ask to be recognized and I'll keep a list and we'll go in order. Mr. Pecat, let's go back to you.
Sure.
Please.
And what I'd say as far as Member Hollins's request, it's a thing where, I guess what I'm saying even to clarify and maybe bring some peace of mind to this is that Munis has a report writing feature called SQL report writing that we could potentially, and it's one of the things regarding the possibility of training, we could develop that exact report to be exported out of Munis. So I'm saying that let's explore that opportunity because we've done it where, I mean, we have a, one of our clients that uses Munis has it down to, you know, French teacher, Spanish teacher, social studies, et cetera, and they have accounts for all of that. And that's how they get their reports, but in Munis, you know, the canned reports would just sum it up by the DESI function code, but you could end up creating a SQL report that could get at exactly what Member Hollins is looking for. And I'm just saying, with some training and then some exploration regarding the SQL capability, if that's a report that the committee so desires and that's what's voted on by the committee, then we can have the potential to generate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Who was next? I'm sorry. Any school committee members that have something they would want to speak to additionally? Okay, so we have a motion on the table. Susan Farber, would you be so kind as to read the motion?
The motion is to do all financial reporting for the school committee using Munis.
Thank you. And any further discussion from the members of the committee?
Question?
Please, Member Hollins.
Until the report, as Andy's explaining it, is set up so that we can see information according to how our budget's been developed, if we vote, of course, this is a system we're using, until it's set up, does that mean the report we're getting that lets us see how money's being spent will be stopped or not? I understand we're going to switch, does that mean we will no longer have a report right now?
If I may, through the chair...
Go ahead, Andy, please.
I would recommend that we wouldn't make the change until two things occur. A, the training, B, the agreement of the full committee that this is, you know, a report we want, and also it'll allow me the time to explore through the SQL module as far as generating what it is that you're currently used to seeing. So I would say reporting right now is status quo until we can ensure that all the things that we're talking about is under consideration, that it meets what the full committee feels or majority of the committee feels is an acceptable report out of Munis to allow them to make those decisions. So no, I would not say we would be changing immediately.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andy. And my recollection from the budget subcommittee meeting where we last had this discussion is exactly what Andy is describing, is that we would switch once we're ready and the priority at this point is to get ready to switch. Any further discussion from the school committee members? Okay, so let's move to a vote on this. Member Johnson Musad, would you do a roll call, please?
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, yes. Chair Prorietti?
Yes.
Member Wall, are you with us? Mayor Weida Gardner?
Here. I mean, yes.
Member, Member Wall just texted me that she can hear what's happening on her phone.
And if she is using G-Set, she could try again to get connected. Whatever was happening with the internet service appears to be resolved.
Okay.
Okay, so...
I just mentioned... Oops, sorry.
That's okay. We're going to move on to the next piece of the budget subcommittee recommendations, which is the filling of vacant central office positions. I'm actually going to give a little bit about this and then we'll see where this goes. So there's a, there's a number of positions that are currently vacant, that there's an interest in being filled. And I think, you know, in terms of folks who are listening at home, folks who are trying to understand how the school committee works, there are certain... there are certain positions within the school system that are the purview of, the hiring is the purview of the school committee, and the vast majority are the purview of the superintendent. Some that are under the school committee include business manager, the superintendent, the director of people services. And what we are looking to do is really support the superintendent and have folks in place that can do the work that needs to be done to lead the district. And I guess we're interested at this point in talking about filling a couple of leadership roles. I don't know, Member Ekstrom or Superintendent Harper, would either of you like to talk a little bit more before we do a motion around central office positions?
I think we're going to have to do motions around each of the various.
Okay. So one thing we did talk about in the budget subcommittee meeting that is of interest, I believe, to the school committee is the hiring of assistant superintendent and/or a curriculum director. And that's been something we've tossed around really, at least since the shutdown in March, maybe before that it was talked about as well. And I would entertain a motion to that effect to begin a search process for that position.
So moved.
That's Member Ekstrom, and do I have a second?
One second.
That's Member Hollins, and let's move to discussion.
I'd like to speak.
Please, Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
I guess the motion, to me, I'd have a hard time voting yes on it because it's hiring of assistant superintendent and/or curriculum director. So which or both, I think that should be clear in the motion.
Thank you. Would anyone like to friendly amend to make it clearer? Member Johnson Musad, you're welcome to do that, too.
I don't have an opinion.
I'll friendly amend.
Please, go ahead, Member Hollins.
That the motion be to hire an assistant superintendent for curriculum and personnel.
Thank you. And who made the motion? Member Ekstrom? Would you accept that friendly amendment to your motion?
Well, in other words, we're talking about personnel. This was assistant superintendent and curriculum director. Personnel hadn't been discussed.
So the intent was to seek an assistant superintendent for curriculum?
And curriculum director.
So two different positions?
The curriculum director would be their main focus. However, it is also an assistant superintendent so that our current superintendent can work with that person, and he would conduct the business of the school community together so that the superintendent isn't consistently functioning as superintendent on her own. Or not, I don't mean on her own, but as only one person not, only one person having all that responsibility. I'm not saying all of this properly. I hope we know what I'm saying.
Good job.
Please, go ahead. Is that Mayor Weidergardner?
It was. Somebody else jumped in a little bit with me at the same time. I just, I think that both of those positions are very important. I know that the curriculum director predates the desire to have one, and the need to have one predates most of our being on the committee. So I think that's an important position that should stand alone. And the assistant superintendent is also a very important position to assist, do what it's supposed to do, assist the superintendent. So I would be in favor of separating both of those into separate motions and creating two positions. I get that it would be nice to have the luxury of assistant superintendent for curriculum, therefore, having one position. But I don't think we're there yet. We don't even have a single assistant superintendent to work with the super on what those persons' priorities should be. So that's kind of where I'm at on this one.
Okay, so just to recap, before anyone else speaks, we're still looking to identify a motion that works for the committee. So we'll try to work towards that. If you are going to make a comment, I'd suggest that we try to narrow it down to what we can actually vote on. And any comment from anyone? I am interested, obviously, in hearing from Superintendent Harper and her thoughts. But anyone can speak.
I saw Superintendent looking, ready to speak.
Okay, and I cannot see her on my screen, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Superintendent Harper, please.
Okay, so just a little bit of context. First of all, the curriculum director position is unquestionably a very important position. It is in the budget. It is currently approved by the school committee and budgeted. We have been holding rolling interviews. We provided updates from time to time. We have not found a successful candidate for that position with specifically pre-K to 12 experience as a teacher or administrator because this person will work with all grade levels. We want some level of experience at a broad range and also the necessary credentials or skills in other areas. We haven't yet found a successful candidate. That was pre-pandemic. Since we have been in this situation, there have been several shifting priorities, and it has made the priorities a little bit clearer in certain areas, and there are other backfilled positions. So just by way of context, I want to clarify that the curriculum director position is in the budget and is vacant. There are a number of other positions that are in the budget but currently vacant for which we are running searches actively, and we are either not yet having found a successful candidate for that position, and we're using interim staff, or we are keeping it vacant for budgetary reasons while we have prioritized bringing back teachers, instructional assistants, and other classroom-related and school-based staff. So central office is unquestionably understaffed right now. And there are members of the community who would like to see more staff in central office in order to provide some of the really essential services. This comes up around registration. We've had an absolutely terrific registrar in the Greenfield Public Schools for decades, who retired recently. And today, that person was back in our schools and continuing to help us out because while we are running a search, we offered that to a couple of different candidates over the last several weeks. And as of Friday afternoon, our top candidate for that position declined on Friday afternoon. So on Monday, today, we had additional support in registration taking place already today. These are the kind of day-to-day administrative decisions that are necessary for running the school district, not just the school department and central office, but at the buildings, the principals do this as well. But I want to be very clear, if the committee is looking to add a position to the budget, there is some history that should be discussed. For example, the current curriculum director position is there in place of an assistant superintendent because of the cost-saving to the district and the need to make it fit in the budget, and also because we felt that we could achieve some efficiencies by going to online systems and other ways that we could be more efficient and have fewer staff to make sure that we were not top-heavy. So while I certainly appreciate the desire to have more staff and help, I think some of the most critical positions in central office include some of the administrative assistant positions. For example, in the superintendent's office, there was always two staff, one that handles more of staff and personnel, and one that reports to the school committee. And one, sorry, and those two people jointly assist the superintendent in all the tasks, hiring letters, all of the hiring of any new staff member. All of that comes through the superintendent's office. And for maybe 15 years, that has been two people. Since these past several months, that has been only one person due to the budget cuts that this committee has been apprised of and trying to make sure that we are within the mayor's budget. At the school level, we did not fill assistant principals at the middle school and the high school in order to stay within the mayor's budget. In a number of other areas, at the people services office, we did not fill an assistant director for people services in order to stay within the mayor's budget. Recently, the committee voted to let us recall some essential teachers, special education teachers, classroom teachers. We have not recalled, for example, a technology teacher at Federal Street School. These positions in the middle of remote learning are quite important. So if the committee is interested in creating new positions in the budget, I will continue to advocate for classroom-based and school-based positions, even though it's not the most convenient for myself or my staff, quite the opposite. I will continue to advocate for school-based positions as a priority first. However, it is clear that we do need some of these additional support positions in central. So I would just ask that we do this comprehensively and as part of the budget review, and not as one-off positions. As far as the curriculum director, my recommendation, and wanting to wait for this discussion tonight, didn't bring forward a recommendation. This meeting was tabled after last week's meeting, which had technical difficulties, and we moved it. So I've held off. But what I would recommend to this committee is that we use the funds that are currently allocated and available for curriculum director to post for a position that is a remote learning specialist, which is a slightly above a teacher-level position, and identify one staff member who is fully trained and continues to remain up to date in remote learning, technology, strategies, and support, who is the lead for other teachers in the district, who they can reliably go to and does not have a class roster of their own, and who can be the one designated person to provide constant refreshment and training to the others in terms of remote learning techniques, and that that position lasts at least through this school year. And I would recommend that those funds be used immediately for that purpose, and that we then continue this discussion about administrative support, additional administrative positions, particularly at the middle school, high school, and people services level, and as well, if you want to continue the discussion about having an assistant superintendent. Certainly, our district could benefit from all those positions. And I want to be clear, there is a need. But we have continued to, all of us, take on multiple roles and do many jobs in order to preserve a level of staffing in the arts, in the school-based programs, so as to prioritize services to students. So just in short, I do support filling the curriculum director, but I think we could best use those funds right now by posting that for a remote learning specialist who's assisting with the curriculum in the remote learning. And then I would ask that, before the budget come back to the school committee shortly for approval, that we make a sort of batch review of any new positions that you might like to see, including how you'd like to reallocate funds from positions that were eliminated, like the SRO, and any movement based on enrollment because we have a number of enrollment changes that sort of settle on October 1st. That would be an appropriate time to look at how are our class sizes? Is there anyone we can move? And to make recommendations for how best to use those staff. We really have kind of held back on filling positions, not knowing what the state budget would have been this year, the extraordinary uncertainty, and making sure that the committee was not overextended. As a result, we are more thin and lean in staffing than we typically are and would like to be. And that's because of this.
I think she did.
Mayor respawns?
Comment?
Yes.
Yes?
Amy, you're muted. So I heard Member Ekstrom first, and I heard Member Hollins after that. And I want to also thank the superintendent for an excellent overview that was super helpful. Member Ekstrom, please, go ahead.
So while I appreciate all of those things that you said and take them into account, and this is just me speaking, we have a $35 million organization that has one person at the top and others who, we have other contracts that have not been completed. And things are falling through the cracks that seem to be top-down. So while everything of what you're saying is accurate, the positions that were chosen to be let go of from the administrative office were not something that we agreed to or were discussed because knowing that we have a $35 million organization, and my background is a backup bookkeeper and a number of other things, tells me that not one person can do all of those things. And so the reason for an assistant superintendent is to assist with those things. And I absolutely agree, a technology director is an important position. I agree with all of that. However, if the business doesn't run well at the top, it's not going to be able to be run well at the bottom. And so that's sort of my thoughts. And if anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them. And Member Hollins, I believe you are up next.
Member Hollins, go ahead.
Well, I first want to agree with the mayor that the positions that are in central office, whether it's here in the mayor's office, they're all distinct and unique. And when you're talking about education, yes, there's a specialty in grant writing. We have a person now that's just specialized for grant writing. There's a specialization in assessment. You have to know how children are doing. There's a specialization in technology and curriculum, high school curriculum, in each area of, yes. And how you staff the whole central office for those functions is generally based on your enrollment. We are not a large district. We're like under 2,000 students. And when you have smaller districts, as the superintendent said, those positions get synthesized. And I agree with the superintendent, you try to, you have to, get most of your money where the students are because the whole purpose of the whole $35 million system is to make sure the students get an education, and it has to be equitable. It can't be inequitable from school to school or not making sure students who need accommodations don't receive them. So a lot of times, central offices don't have every single distinct position. And I agree with Susan Ekstrom that maybe in thinking through the positions in the central office, we have to think which ones are at a level that they can step in and help with superintendent functions. But my point is, I think the discussion has to be, how do we want to staff the central office? For example, we went for years with a part-time transportation coordinator. Now we have a full-time transportation coordinator. That's one of the trade-offs. And you have to look always, I think, even when the mayor was on the school committee, there was a curriculum office, not so much, you know, was there a secretary, how many people or what they were called, but there has to be a curriculum office that's looking at assessment and training and curriculum. You may have consultants, you may. I just think we have to talk about how we're going to staff the whole central office and not pick it apart in pieces and see where we can take the budget for the central office, make it make sense. And it may not be just filling this position or that one. But as long as I've been on the school committee and before, the discussion was, should it be an assistant superintendent of curriculum, also with some other functions like assessment and personnel? Or should it be, who's the school committee hires? Or just a director, what's the superintendent hires, and the school committee has no role? So my thought is, I agree with the superintendent. We need to have a comprehensive look at the office. And it sounds like right now, the big need is how to support technology online, which is what's happening this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hollins. Additional comments and questions from the school committee members, please?
I have a clarifying question. If there are no other member questions, I'll.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Superintendent.
So a question, I guess, I'm struggling a bit. This was posted as filling vacant positions. So there's a distinction here between currently budgeted and vacant positions. If there were a motion to fill all vacant positions in the budget, I would be happy, now that we have these agreements and we're focused, and you know, we've been really focused on getting schools started and preparing for students. And there's a bit of a.
on getting schools started and preparing for students, and there's a bit of a, there's nobody to lead hiring in the central office right now. If we had an Assistant Superintendent, maybe they would do that role, but regardless, there's not somebody that we're doing, sorry, Mayor, was that, I couldn't.
Nothing.
So now that we have really gotten the work done to start the school year, I would be delighted to shift into hiring for all vacant positions if I had the school committee authorization. We would exceed the mayor's budget if we had, if we took that step. So if that is the direction of the committee tonight, I'm happy to focus on filling those positions. But there's a contradiction between meeting the budget and meeting the fiduciary responsibility of the committee in uncertain budget times, and knowing that this community can't withstand additional tax burden necessarily, that it doesn't have ample reserves, that this committee has not yet voted to go for a supplemental budget in order to meet the additional needs. Those are all actions that this committee certainly could discuss and take, but they aren't on the agenda tonight, and they're not the superintendent's authorization. So I'd be happy to act on a directive to fill all vacant positions as a priority. The regulations from the Department of Education this past year, since March, have been extraordinary, and as I've expressed to the chair many times, were an unfunded mandate. Districts like ours, that, you know, the community may appreciate or not appreciate long documents, but they are what was required by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the various stages of closure and reopening that were required of us. It wasn't because we like writing long documents. So those steps are more burdensome to districts that have fewer administrators, and I'm not sure if the answer is providing more administrators. We've received criticism from the council that we've had too many administrators. You know, tonight I'm hearing that you can't do it all. I think I've been saying for many years, one person can't do it all, so I don't disagree. But I just want to say that we have been tasked from the state with an extraordinary level of responsibilities that do exceed our day-to-day responsibilities. Now that we've fulfilled those, we need to make sure that our district is running smoothly and well, and the committee has a lot of discretion in how you'd like to see this happen. But as far as tonight, the posted agenda simply says, "Filling vacant positions," so it'd be extremely helpful to me to clarify which currently vacant positions the committee wants to see as a priority, if that's something you could articulate, and if they're new positions, I think that would need to be posted separately.
I would like to speak.
Mayor Wiedegartner, go ahead.
What's not on the agenda tonight is to give the superintendent broad authority to hire all the vacant office, central office positions, as she's suggesting that she would be interested in entertaining that. But that's not on the agenda tonight. However, I think we have identified a couple of vacant positions that are, that would fall under that category, and I think that's what the motion is speaking to. So I'd like us to keep this discussion as much as possible without getting sidetracked to what the motion is, and it might be helpful at this point to have Susan reread it.
Susan Farber, would you be so kind as to reread the motion before we continue discussion?
We never actually got a motion.
Oh, dear. Okay. Good Lord.
I believe that the motion to hire an Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Personnel was rejected by the motion I have, and it's not active.
Okay. So let's start, and the conversation is still helpful, it's not the end of the world if we're not acting on a motion right now. Let's try to get to a motion. We've heard from the superintendent how it would be helpful to support her and what she would like to see in terms of hiring. We've heard a couple of variances of that, and we should try, at this point, to identify motion to proceed.
I can. I can. Motion.
I heard Member Johnson Musad and then Member Hollins.
This is listed on the agenda, Budget Subcommittee Recommendations, so I'm wondering if a member of the Budget Subcommittee would like to take another try at making a motion. It's specifically on the agenda as Budget Subcommittee Recommendations, Filling Vacant Central Office Positions.
Correct. So Member Wall, myself, and Member Exstrom, as well as, I believe, Member Hollins attended the meeting, but the Subcommittee is myself, Member Exstrom, and Member Wall. And our discussion, that meeting centered around an interest in hiring an Assistant Superintendent. And the discussion also was, in a few ways, we touched on something that's come up, at least since I've been chair in January, that there is often a need for curriculum and someone to manage that piece. I heard, not loud and clear, but pretty clearly from the superintendent tonight, that that piece, as technology changes, Curriculum Director is less important, and she said very clearly that what would actually be helpful is either to say, hey, we're going to try to hire for all positions, or what would really help me is a Remote Learning Specialist. I believe that's kind of the gist of what she said. I think there is a consistent interest from the Budget Subcommittee members that an Assistant Superintendent would be the process we would like to move forward with. But I would ask Member Exstrom and/or Member Wall to also chime in on that. Member Exstrom, did you need to speak? Did you want to speak?
We didn't hear the last part of your sentence. Want to ask Member Exstrom?
Oh, or Member Wall to, I'm sorry, Member Exstrom or Member Wall, if you could add anything to what I just summarized.
I don't think we have Member Wall on the call, unless she's joined.
She can only listen. I just offered her to come where I am, and there isn't enough time for that. She's not able to get back on, she's been trying.
Okay. I'm sorry, that's a bummer.
Okay, so I will, so I will offer a motion to hire a Assistant Superintendent. Period. So that it's specific.
So your motion is, I think we're all breaking up a little bit, so let's be really, make sure we're really good. Your motion is to, you move to hire an Assistant Superintendent, period. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do I have a second for that motion?
Second.
That was Mayor Wiedegartner with the second, and now let's have further discussion on that motion, please.
So I do want to say, and I've heard, Jordana, I heard you say that you're willing to do all those things, I appreciate that. I think that, and what we've discussed in the Budget Subcommittee, is that we would prefer to go to an outside service, so that we would widen the search, because I think there's an opportunity for us to capture people who want to leave the city, frankly. And by widening that search, and also using someone whose goal and job is to search out upper-level administrative staff for schools, they will also tease out of the school committee and community what it is that we are looking for exactly in skills that that person has, and that are important to us. Because sometimes that doesn't, people don't think of things until later, and so these are things that we want to provide, and think that that would be better found if there was an entity outside of us helping us to think about these things. And so that was, that's the other piece.
So at least for me, Member Exstrom, you broke up a little bit at the end there. Could you repeat what you just said at the end?
And so I said, well, at least for me, that's another piece, is having an entity that is not part of this community, or has a more, has a larger knowledge base of what things should be required, or what it is that we should look for, but also has, frankly, I think that in Western math, just being small, that sort of our administrations, and I think I've seen this throughout Western math, the administrators move from school district to school district, which totally makes sense, but let's try not recycle people who are already here, and look for something outside of our sphere of knowledge, I'll say.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for the superintendent.
Recommendation from the Budget Committee. We all sort of agreed on that as well, so.
Yep.
Everyone, feel free to discuss.
Member Johnson Musad, I didn't hear what you said. Go ahead and speak.
I have a question for the superintendent, if I may, on this topic.
Please.
Superintendent Harper, can you speak to what you think have been obstacles in terms of hiring for this position, and what you think it might take to fill it?
Sure, but I'll admit that I'm not clear what position we're talking about anymore. I have heard Curriculum Director, Assistant Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum, Assistant Superintendent for Personnel, and I do think that one of the most important things will be really clear about what it is that this position is. The position we have been actively interviewing for is the Curriculum Director, and it includes three roles, because as a district without tons of funding for administrators, there are often multiple things that administrators are asked to do. One is curriculum alignment, another is professional development, and a third is some support for principals in their use of assessment and data.
Forgive my ignorance, can you tell me, is there currently a vacant central office position for the role of Assistant Superintendent?
There's a vacant position for the role of Curriculum Director. There is no voted position by the school committee as an Assistant Superintendent that was eliminated some time ago, and the salary was reduced from that of an Assistant Superintendent, roughly the range of $120,000, to that of a Curriculum Director, roughly $80,000, as a cost-saving measure. So the budget includes an amount, including grants, for a Curriculum Director at that lower amount. And I will say, in general, salary ranges in Greenfield are not always competitive, and that is important, as you're thinking about somebody who has teaching experience and may have several years of teaching experience, so they would be higher if they were in a teaching, teacher's contract in a neighboring district, or even in our own district. And you have to think about it in terms of relative to the workload and salary scales of principals. So those are sort of important points, and when looking at it. This may be a bit aside, but just in the conversation about central office positions, we are currently working with TMS. TMS is providing an interim service to us. We do not have a permanent business manager in that role. It is, it has been and continues to be my recommendation, that while we have the expert services of TMS with us, that we begin that comprehensive search that you all are talking about, to recruit a business manager. A business manager typically fills many of the personnel functions that you all are discussing, in terms of oversight, contracts, and support. And I would like to note that I'm not clear what it means when Member Exstrom or any other member says things are falling through the crack, but I would appreciate clear and specific information if somebody feels that way, that I can act upon before meetings, so I can address any specific questions. You'll recall, about two meetings ago, we requested authorization for a position called Payroll and Personnel Assistant, specifically to help with the extensive COVID-19 personnel and payroll-related increase in workload, staff requesting leaves under the Families' First Coronavirus Relief Act, staff coming and going as a response to changes in their economic or family status as a result of the pandemic, these increased workloads. So the committee supported this, and we posted it, and interviews are being held for that position, there was interviews today. And that position is, again, a lower salary range in terms of an administrative support under the Payroll Director. Again, we're looking for cost-effective ways to provide the necessary services to our community. So that, I think, may address some of the questions that are coming up tonight, and we appreciate the committee's support for that urgent position, which we're moving full steam ahead with.
And when was that position posted? Because it was approved, as you said, two meetings ago.
I can check, Member Exstrom, I'd be happy to send you that information.
That would be, from what I can see, it was posted on August 31st, on school spring.
Well, then you clearly have the answer.
So then why wasn't it posted months ago when we approved it?
Member Exstrom. I'd be happy to discuss that with you offline.
Yeah, Member Exstrom, it's outside of the scope of this discussion. We need to.
My recommendation.
Absolutely. Question.
My recommendation is that the motion be withdrawn, because it doesn't line up with what we have on the agenda. If the Budget Subcommittee wants to recommend creating a new position of Assistant Superintendent, then that would probably need to be a different budget, agenda item than what we have listed today, which is filling vacant central office positions.
Who made the motion? Member Exstrom?
Yes.
So the request has come to withdraw the motion. How would you like to proceed?
We can withdraw the motion.
I can speak more to the request to withdraw, if that's helpful.
I appreciate that. Can I try for a second? Based on what I'm hearing from everyone, it sounds to me like there is a need to have some additional detailed discussion about how we move forward with filling vacancies, and how we align those with what we can afford, and also how we align those with the needs of the leadership within the district. And we don't have a clear path forward at this point. I certainly, from what I'm hearing, agree with Member Johnson Musad, that we do not have what we need right now to know that this motion is something that we can carry forward easily or effectively. And it needs, we need to have a clearer, a clearer path. And Member Exstrom, as well as Member Wall, regarding our discussions on the Budget Subcommittee, I don't, I don't think that what we've done so far tonight is without merit. We have had an important discussion with the full school committee about what we're thinking, and we got some really good indication from the superintendent of what would be helpful to her. Perhaps we should call a Budget Subcommittee meeting in the very near future, and try again to get some more details in place around affordability, and also filling gaps in what we need to support our students.
Is the motion withdrawn, and if so, would it be a different motion?
Not yet.
I'll withdraw the motion.
Okay, so the motion is withdrawn. Thank you, Member Exstrom. And Member Hollins, you wanted to try for a different motion?
Yes, I'm not, wasn't against the motion, but apparently that wasn't what was on the agenda, so I do want to say, I don't think we're limited as a governing committee by an advisory committee, but this would be my motion, based on listening to everything tonight, to authorize filling the vacant Curriculum Director position, using some or all available funding for the position, and to meet the current need for specialist support in technology and remote learning.
Would you be so kind as to repeat the motion, Member Hollins?
Try. To authorize filling the vacant Curriculum Director position, using some or all available funding, and to meet the current need for specialist support for technology and remote learning. In other words, fill the position, let it address the immediate curriculum need. If you need all the money for that, fine, if you don't need all the money for that, fine.
Do I hear a second to the motion? I'm not hearing a second.
Okay.
So.
I tried.
You did, and I appreciate it. I thought it was a very well-crafted motion. Thank you, Member Hollins. I do feel like, as I said, I think the discussion has gotten us to the point where we perhaps can't take any action tonight, but we can move forward as a budget subcommittee trying to identify further action. And I'm thinking maybe it makes sense to go on to the next new business item unless anyone has any further discussion on this or disagrees with me.
Could I make one other comment? I know I've commented before.
Please.
This is a position that administratively.
Which position are you talking about?
The current position in the budget for a curriculum director, which is funded.
Yep.
Is a position that the superintendent of schools fills. It's already in the budget and approved by us, so we really don't have to take other action on it unless we wanted to give advice, but it's the superintendent's position to fill right now. I just wanted to say that.
Correct. Thank you.
Could I speak?
Is that Mayor Weidigartner? Go ahead.
It is. If we follow your lead, Chair Proetti, I don't see why we wouldn't. I'm wondering if the budget subcommittee, if their meeting again, wouldn't make an overall recommendation. One, these are the positions that are open. Two, these are the priority that we give them. And three, we are recommending that you hire X or Y or Z at this meeting or something like that. So it's more comprehensive, and we know what positions are open and what they're attempting to recommend over time, again, for budget purposes as much as anything else.
Sure, thank you. Any further discussion on this topic before we move on? Okay, I actually think that was an excellent discussion. We got a lot of good information, and I'll work with Member Exstrom to get a budget subcommittee meeting scheduled in the near future. So we are going to move on to new business item B, goals for and charged to the committee that is charged with redrawing the district map. This has come up a couple of times. I'll give a brief overview. When we're talking about the redrawing of the district map, we're basically talking about, depending upon where your family lives in the district, which elementary school you go to. The middle school everyone goes to, the high school everyone goes to. AEL also covers the entire district. So we're talking about where students would go, whether it is Four Corners, Federal Street, or Newton School. And I will say, I've said this a few times before, when I was running for school committee and even after joining school committee, this is something that comes up frequently with our community members. It's the thing that folks consistently during my campaign for school committee were most interested in talking about. There is a perception that our district map does not, doesn't send students, doesn't distribute students in a way evenly across the elementary schools. That is, I'm trying to find the right word, and it just needs to be looked at again. Let's put it that way. I think as we discussed, some more information about where I'm not being very articulate right now will come out, but that is what we're talking about. In a previous meeting, we had discussed this, and we had made a motion that was unanimous to embark on this process, and I appointed Member Wall to be the chair of the subcommittee that was going to do this work. Where we're at with this process right now is basically talking about it. I would call this a need to start an information gathering stage and talking a little bit right now about how we proceed with that. I don't think that we need a motion. I think we need to discuss as a school committee in public how we might proceed with this work, and I would take any suggestions at this point from school committee members.
Yeah, I would like to speak.
Katie Karen, please. Member Karen, go ahead.
Just like the chair said, I heard about this a lot in my campaign and over the many years of just being a parent in town, but also being on the committee, that people are really interested in talking about this. As someone who's grown up in Greenfields, the district lines have changed many times. At one time, when I was even a child in school, we had five or six elementary schools open. Before that, we had even more. We used to really operate on neighborhood schools, but as the town expanded and busing, it became more necessary. That changed a little. But I think it'd be a really important place for this committee to start is looking at the history of how the lines were drawn to begin with and when they changed and why they changed. In preparation for tonight's meeting, I was kind of picking my mom's brain, and she said that there used to be really different ways of doing things. She was trying to remember, you know, that even certain areas actually got divided up between different schools, not just straightforward. So it'd be interesting to have that piece, the historical piece. That's all.
Thank you. And for context, Member Karen grew up in Greenfield. Her mother's worked in the Greenfield schools for 175 years, I think.
Yep.
176 years, maybe.
Yeah.
And Member Karen attended Greenfield Public Schools. So that's helpful. And I should have also said that the historical context also would be helpful for this discussion as well. Thank you, Member Karen.
Could I speak?
Other comments, please. Mayor Weidigartner, go ahead.
I agree with Katie's assessment, and I think the historical piece is important. I would also like us, particularly the subcommittee who will be bringing us a recommendation or at least some findings, I think, from their work, to keep in mind all of the factors that go into why we decide where certain students go. If you live right next door to an elementary school, you probably know you're going to that elementary school. But if you don't, then there are other factors having to do with transportation and other things. So that's not, while it's important to make sure that, which I think, I certainly heard about this myself on the campaign, most of the concerns were around whether we are equitably distributing our students so that there's no one group of students that's placed in a single place just because of where they live. But are there ways to more equitably distribute them throughout the school system? And that's certainly a laudable goal and one we should strive for, but we also have to do it in the context of other factors that we have to consider.
Thank you, Mayor Weidigartner. Other comments from the committee?
A comment for me?
Please, Member Hollins, go ahead.
I just checked with Member Wall, who's listening but can't speak. She and I did talk about this. I wanted to mention that at planning construction meeting, the Green River School is anticipated to be available in February. And as the mayor just said, there are many considerations. One is the changing cost of transportation, and another is facility use of the schools that we have. I think we've been hearing that a couple of schools may be overcrowded. So I think those are all issues to look at. How are we using the schools we have? Where do students live? We've talked, Jean and I have talked about, should Green, should one of Green River go back to being an elementary school? Do we have the population for that? And all the issues about equitable distribution of students. But I did want to throw in that Green River School will likely be open for use in the middle of this year.
Thank you.
That's all.
I'd like to speak.
Member Johnson Musad, please, go ahead.
I'd just like to point out that sometimes these school districting issues can really have an overlay with equity issues because schools with higher, communities or neighborhoods with a higher socioeconomic status pool together, parents who are able to maybe be more engaged in the schools and, you know, and so on. And so I think equity is more than just about looking at, you know, getting all the students from a particular neighborhood to go to a certain school and having an equal number of students at each school or whatever. It's also looking at that overlay of equity and how to address that and how to give students from different socioeconomic statuses access to each other to view the world through different lenses and build relationships across difference. So I hope that would be part of the charge of the committee that is looking at this and not just. Sometimes equity isn't just about distributing all resources equally, but it's also about looking at where people are starting at different points and helping folks who are experiencing challenges get a boost.
Very well said. Thank you, Member Johnson Musad. Other comments and questions from the school committee members? Okay, so we would like to certainly get started with collecting information, and I think, I'm wondering if the superintendent can help with identifying, I don't know who actually can help with identifying where the district map lines lie now, and the historical changes to those lines, I think, would also be helpful. And I think, kind of thinking about having something as a start to this process that involves the public, where we can provide a visual representation of what the district map currently looks like, as well as proposals for how it would change and get some public input. That is as much as I've thought about this kind of on my own, but it seems like we need to do that information gathering that is in a public context. And where this actual information lies now is something I would have to probably look to the district administration, to the superintendent. I don't know if the city has any purview over this. I know it's a school committee purview in terms of drawing the lines, but getting the actual information is something we need to work out. Superintendent Harper, do you have any guidance on any of that?
Sure, I have a lot of thoughts on this.
Please, go ahead.
I support very much the analysis of this, and I think it's past time to take a thorough look at it. I am very much in support of this project insofar as it can involve a lot of family input, community feedback, and that it supports the achievement goals of all of our students. So every student that lives in Greenfield or attends Greenfield School should have the absolute best access to our schools, and that should be very thoughtfully set about with purposeful access to our schools and programs. For example, we've thought about encouraging neighborhood enrollment, but also allowing students, for example, that want to attend an ELT school, to be able to attend a school that offers an expanded learning time day, even if that's not their home school. And that approach has worked very well for families that want to take advantage of that offering. Because there are differences across our schools, we want to keep that element of choice. There is some background noise if somebody is not muted and can mute. I'd appreciate it.
I can take care of that.
Great, thank you. I do think you should consider, if you are interested, as we heard earlier this evening, in not overtasking central office and in doing things well and getting professional support, I think you should consider hiring, as Member Johnson said, thinking about this from an equity lens, I think you should consider hiring a consultant that analyzes the data from an equity perspective and is an independent outside look at where our students are enrolling, the historical trends, the socioeconomic background of various neighborhoods and demographics, as well as the long-term enrollment projections. These types of projects are a bit hard to do. It's one of the reasons they often get pushed off. I've supported this project for many years, so I agree. There never seems to be a good time to start it, and three days before the school year starts is, I think.
During a pandemic.
In that category. But I would encourage that if the committee feels this is important, it should put resources into doing it well, and because it will affect where people feel their home is, their neighborhood school becomes a bit of a home to them, and people feel closely identified. And when I began and we did a lot of listening sessions, parents said, I want my children in their elementary school longer, fewer transitions, they know everyone in their neighborhood school, and the identity of neighborhood schools was important to them. So it's not a geographical exercise of redrawing lines. It's a bit of an identity issue, and as Member Johnson said, it can be an equity issue in terms of access to resources. I think the mayor had really good points about transportation. When we analyzed the transportation costs over the past several years, we always talk about transportation and walkable routes, the safe routes to school, bicycling to school, the DPW projects and the safe routes projects that are going on throughout the city need to be closely aligned with this project. So everywhere the city repairs a sidewalk and makes it more accessible, we have an easier way for children to get safely to school without the cost of a bus. And so it's got to have some city representation from the DPW or the mayor's designee, the school committee representation. But I would strongly encourage you to consider dedicating resources to a facilitator for the purpose of data analysis and really looking at this closely. It may seem counterintuitive. People might be listening, thinking, you know, it's easy. I know what I'd do. I'd put this one here and this one there. Any of these projects are worth doing carefully and well, especially to make sure that we've heard from multiple parents and that this is inclusive of the different perspectives and pros and cons. And just a note about Green River, when the STAR Committee, which Member Karen was a member of before she was on the school committee as a parent rep, when we did an analysis of the strategic task force for alignment and reorganization, we're looking at grade spans, and the recommendation from that crew was to create a sister school to the Four Corners Innovation School at Green River and to use the school for agricultural and innovative purposes and to create a school there that was a sister school in terms of thematic and arts-based, but that drew from different areas geographically in the town and ensured that we had, because we have a significant amount of demand for that curriculum. And we do have a good problem in Greenfield, which is we have more students than we always have space for at the elementary level. It's a good problem, but that was a way that we recommended several years back. So now with that building reopening, I agree with Member Hollins that that needs to be looked at freshly. So for all those reasons, I would ask that you consider thinking about appointing some resources to this task to make sure it's done thoughtfully, and to your request at the beginning, Chair, some visual maps of where they are. The information that the district has is not always in the form of, you know, a visual presentation, so it would take some time to put together a presentation for the public. And I would ask that we include multiple forums for parent feedback on any proposed changes well in advance of them occurring.
Thank you. All that's helpful. I'd actually wondered if either the city or FERC would have resources for helping us to plot where everything exists. The idea about a consultant is excellent as well, so thank you for that. It sounds to me like a logical thing to do at this point is to entertain a motion to move this discussion to the budget subcommittee for action on allocating resources.
Comment?
Member Hollins, go ahead.
If you have consultants or if you don't, you have to start by preparing information. And the beginning of this discussion, I mean, the end of the discussion was making sure we involve the community if there are going to be changes, but you're just at the very beginning of looking at your own data. One of the suggestions of Jean, if the committee could be, if this test. One of the suggestions of Jean, if the committee could be, if this test committee could have a wall somewhere, is to plot out where our students are and where the schools are, just to get a sense of that, where the distribution of bodies are by grade, which would take a little time, but they're, that information's available, where families are with children, and to look at costs of transportation and the utilization of our schools. Do we have elementary schools that are overcrowded and what? But even if you get a consultant, you're going to have to have that information organized. So I, I think the first step is to do information gathering. And at that point, it seems like it would make more sense to have someone come in who can look at the information, but it seems that's the first step to me.
Right, and I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think we've been discussing that all along, that it's an information gathering stage, but we also need to have a sense of what sort of resources we have. So I'm, I'm curious if anyone has an idea on a motion for how we would take a next action after this discussion? And I'm open to any suggestion.
I, I just have a question.
Sure. Member Ekstrom, please.
And maybe this, maybe I should wait until there's a motion.
Nope, go ahead. We did not, we did not go into this discussion--
To allocate--
--anticipating a motion. So please, just go ahead and make your, and make your comment.
Can you hear me?
I can.
There was a bit of a lag, but it seems to have sorted out.
It's interesting to me that we have funds, and I'm not saying this in any interesting or intention of poking a bear, but it seems to me, or it's interesting to me, that we are willing to allocate funds to hire a consultant agency to talk about redistricting. However, we are not willing to allocate funds to discuss hiring an assistant superintendent.
Well--
Truth be told, that's, that's what's going through my head. Truth be told, and I, and I--
Okay. What I, what I would say to that is, the superintendent was just very clear that this, this process is really at the purview of the school committee, and we can proceed in whatever way we would like to. And I saw the allocation of funds piece as a suggestion of a way to proceed--
Okay.
--but not that we have to do it. Yeah.
That's fine. Thank you.
We'll leave, we'll leave the bears alone for today.
This is Katie, I'd like to speak.
Katie, go ahead. Member Karen, please.
I think that talking about the allocation of funds will be an important step, but I think that the best step is for the committee to meet and make a plan of how they want to proceed, what the first steps are, and then maybe that Subcommittee does research about even how much a consult would cost. You know what I mean? Like, it's kind of hard to have a meeting about a consultation that you don't even know the purpose of, or how soon we would need it, like what that process is exactly. So I think the best, maybe the, the vote or not vote is just strong suggestion that that committee start meeting very soon, because clearly we're not talking about anything for the next day, because clearly school starts in two days. We're talking about a year ago awayed plan or making a change two years from now, because even with all of the steps taken before then, we have to get a plan going, we have to present that information to the public, we've got to get some feedback. It doesn't seem like a plan that's going to take six months. It seems like a long-term plan. So I think maybe allocation's a little soon for that step, but it's something we should be thinking about and the Budget Subcommittee keeps in the back of their mind when they're looking at the budget.
Thank you. Very well said. I am, so we have a Chair of this committee, which is Member Wall. And--
Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, just, I, I don't, maybe someone could correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think normally committees, when they meet, they form and, and vote on their own chairs, but I don't know whether I'm, I know that's what we did with, with the chair, with the committees that I'm on.
Fair enough. You are correct. But I had only had an interest in, I knew this would be something that Member Wall would be interested in tackling, and so she was the first person that I went to and made that appointment. You're right, she is the initial member appointed to the committee to be consistent with our, our typical procedures. I appreciate that. What I would ask of the school committee at this time is if those who are interested in serving on the redistricting project committee be so kind as to email me indicating their interest, we will put a Subcommittee together based on that. It seems like that's the right way to move forward at this point. Typically, our Subcommittees have three members. So we already have Member Wall, and then I would look to appoint two more. So if you're interested, I wouldn't, I would ask you to indicate that in an email to me.
Comment?
Member Hollins, go ahead.
I just want to say that we have a policy on Subcommittee's, and I believe the policy says that the Chair does appoint the Chair of the Subcommittee. And I thought I was asked to be on this committee, but it's fine if I wasn't.
You know, I couldn't, I, I couldn't exactly remember that, and if I'm remembering correctly, it was only Member Wall that actually made it into the minutes. So just send me an email, Member Hollins, please. I would have assumed that you had an interest in being on this committee.
I thought I was asked, but either way, Member Wall and I have been talking about it, so it doesn't matter.
Sure.
This is Susan Farber with information.
Ah, yes. Susan Farber, please.
The minutes show that Member Wall and Member Hollins were appointed to this committee.
Thank you. Thank you. So I would ask that anyone else who's interested, I'll take one more spot on that. And I should also, I should also say that, you know, no, I'll, I'll just leave it at that for now, and we'll talk about it at another time. Thank you all for that discussion. I feel like it's, we're at a point where we can move on. Does anyone want to say anything else?
Chair, is this an ad hoc committee or a standing Subcommittee?
I think we're going to make it a standing Subcommittee. I think we already did that, didn't we? Susan Farber, do you have clarification? Did we make it a standing Subcommittee? Did we make it a Subcommittee?
My understanding is the standing Subcommittee's are set by policy--
That's right.
--and that this would be an ad hoc committee. That was not clearly discussed, however.
Thank you. We are all so fancy.
Chair, I'm looking at Policy BDE because Member--
She's right.
--Member Hollins referenced it. So it does say that the Subcommittee, the school committee may establish special Subcommittee's at its annual organizational meeting. So this would, I think, instead fall under ad hoc. The Subcommittee will be established through action of the committee. The committee chairperson, subject to approval by the committee, will appoint the Subcommittee chairperson and its members. The Subcommittee will be provided with a list of its functions and duties. The Subcommittee may make recommendations for committee action, but it may not act for the school committee. The committee chairperson and superintendent will be ex officio members of all special Subcommittee's, and a Subcommittee will be dissolved by the committee upon completion of its assignment or at any time by vote of the committee.
Thank you. Thank you. So do we need to do anything else right now? Can we just say this is an ad hoc committee and move forward?
I think so.
Okay. Let's, let's do that. We can revisit it on the agenda as often as we'd like, and since we're meeting every two weeks, we can address it pretty frequently if we'd like to. Thank you all for that discussion. So this will be forthcoming, and, and I appreciate the folks who are like, you know, we're not going to get this done tomorrow, it's going to take a while. I think, you know, this is at least a couple-year process, and that's important for everyone to keep in mind. Okay. We are moving on to new business item C. We have materials in the packet that was posted with the agenda materials for a letter of support for the Big Brothers Big Sisters of Franklin County Volunteer Advocate Program. If you haven't already read it, there is some information in the materials at the end of your packet that explains what this program is. We were approached by Jennifer Webster, the Executive Director of Big Brothers Big Sisters Franklin County, regarding this program, just a broad overview of what it is. Big Brothers Big Sisters is working with volunteer advocates, adult advocates, and also with other nonprofit organizations to create a network of volunteers in the community in Greenfield that would assist, basically, community members, family members, parents, guardians, what have you, with any challenges related to the remote learning environment. So for example, a family is struggling to organize the structure of the day for the children in the house to get their remote learning done. Maybe it's about organizing a space in the home, maybe it's about putting paper schedules together so folks know, so everyone in the family knows who does what and when. Those are just a couple of examples. It might also be direction to other community resources, like applying for SNAP benefits or things like that. It's really open. It would be entirely remote. It would be either phone work or, you know, remote video appointments between the adult in the home who's requesting the assistance and the volunteer advocate. And it would, the Big Brothers Big Sisters would offer support and training to the volunteers. And they are looking for grant money from a number of different sources to get this off the ground. And one of those sources is actually from the city in some respect. I'm not exactly sure which program is potentially offering grant money, but what I'm looking for, for this action is a motion to provide a letter of support for Big Brothers Big Sisters of Franklin County regarding their volunteer advocate program.
So moved.
That was Mayor, I heard Mayor Weider-Gartner, and I'm going to assume Member Johnson Musad would be okay with the second on that?
Yes.
Okay. So any discussion? Easy peasy, right? Shall we move to a vote?
Member Karen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, I'm a yes. Chair Prayety?
Yes.
Member Wall still not with us? Mayor Weider-Gartner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful. Thank you all. What I will do is write a letter, copy it to everyone, and provide that to Big Brothers Big Sisters, likely be able to do it tomorrow. So it will come soon, and you'll get a copy in your email of that. Thank you all. Item six is an executive session that I don't think we need. Is there any reason from either the superintendent or anyone else that we need an executive session this evening?
Chair, I believe that was on the agenda from the previous meeting.
Yes, and are you saying that we do need it or we don't meeting it, need it?
I'm not aware of a, I'm not aware of a need for that, no.
Okay, great. So I do entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Member Johnson Musad, and a second from Mayor Weider-Gartner. And, and let's take the roll call vote.
Member Karen?
Yes.
Member, Vice Chair Ekstrom?
Yes.
Member Hollins?
Yes.
Secretary Johnson, I'm a yes. Chair Prayety?
Yes.
Mayor Weider-Gartner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wonderful, we are adjourned. Thank you to everyone who's joined us tonight. Have a great evening. Best of luck to all the families with the start of school this weekend next.